Regarding the public hearing.
You'll get a chance at that point then for that.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
Appreciate it. Yeah, no problem. Okay, hearing done. We'll start with Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, right from the start, we'll go to the public hearing.
Afternoon, Commissioners. Wait for the presentation to get put up. In the meantime, I'm Elliot Mulder, and I'm the A Planner with Homestead County Planning Department. And I'll give you, we gave you the staff report, presentation for O 2022-003 LUPA, Land Use Plan Amendment and General Development Plan, O 2022-002.
Here we go.
The applicant is Michael Bassett. Let's see if we can. All right.
It would be better if you pointed over here.
Okay.
There you go.
All right, so the first slide that you'll see up here is just denoting the current zoning and current land use. So on the left is our zoning map, and the site is outlined in a black square, site on it. And on the right is a current land use plan, so it's currently zoned A3 agricultural zone. And the current land use is resource protection, potential suburban. You'll note on the right image that it is sandwiched more or less between suburban development as well as potential suburban development. And in the current general land use plan, I'll just remind you that potential suburban development are lands that may be well suited for large lot, single-family development. And it has similar scores to that on the south and the north in Thunder Bluff. And on the left side of that image, on the right, you'll see urban service area. So that's for the city of Rochester. Next slide. All right, Clara, I'll just go to you. So the site does have some floodplain on it. And during pre-development meetings with the applicant, we had made them aware of it. They'll just have to seek a conditional use permit if this is approved to put any construction in there. And it looks like, looking at their general development plan, that there might be a roadway going through. Next. On the screen now is the general development plan. You'll see that the applicant, applicant is proposing 12 single-family lots with a road that connects onto 90th Street Northwest. On the north of the general development plan, you'll see a drainage pond that is proposed. We'll have more information on that in greater detail with the pre-plat documents. This is just, again, general. And then in the top right corner, you'll see that they're proposing a cul-de-sac with an easement for any potential future development. And that was during our pre-development meetings recommended by Public Works, that they include that. So if the neighbors to the north, northeast or east ever want to develop, they would just go through a similar process. So next. On the next slide, you'll just see that general development plan again on the aerial, just to get an idea of what that development might look like. And next. So on this slide, you'll just see the historical land use plan amendment reviews. I just put the most recent five that have come before you. And the most recent in this area was the Bolter Trust property, which was 79 acres and they had proposed 29 lots. And you approved it, and it has since been approved by Orinoco Township, the GDP was. And it's a phased approach, so it's going to be phase one, phase two. And phase one has yet to be approved. Next. So when we review these land use plan amendments, we have specific locational criteria based in the general land use plan. So you can see those on the left. And then just for the public record, I included those findings on the right, basically just showing that this is suited for large lot, single-family development. Next. And then also, we have specific findings of fact in the land use plan to review these applications against. So again, on the left, we have those findings that we look at. And I can just go through them relatively quickly. So there was no mistake in any data that we used to review this. Conditions have changed. Recently, you had approved the Bolter property, which was 79 acres, which is now suburban development. And will eventually go to the pre-plat stage and rezone to eventually have 29 single-family lots. And then have policies changed. We'll remind you that in August, the updated plan will be coming before you. Though I will stress that this application came in during the current land use plan that we have right now on the books, and so that is what we're using to review it against. And as always, there's not an unanticipated shortage of land for suburban development. And then there's just floodplain on the property, which we have made the applicant aware of. So that might hinder some development on the property. On the screen right now is the CLUES model, or Comprehensive Land Use Evaluation System. And this is a masked version using updated data, but the current CLUES model. And so this just excludes any existing areas of suburban development and urban service area, as well as excluding properties that are less than 10 acres in size and publicly owned lands. And so those exclusions are put in place just to show those lots that could potentially be subdivided in the future for suburban development. And you'll see that the purple is those properties that are well suited for suburban development. And the site is in blue. Next. So we have noted that there are many traffic concerns on 75th Street, Highway 63, and 18th Avenue Northwest, which came up with the Bolter property. And so I had talked to Charlie Ryder to give us a quick analysis on the impact to that intersection with development on the site. And I'll just go over those main points, which are on the screen on the right. So the data that he analyzed was from January 2013 to March 2022. And so basically, he found that the overall estimated traffic level, given the limited development proposal, is very low. 70% of the trips in this area are going to Rochester or south. And then the development is expected to have little to no impact overall on the day-to-day interactions that drivers have at that intersection, with it being almost like approximately a 1% increase, if anything. And he did note that there were two to three crashes per year, but none were fatal in that period between 2013 and 2022. Next. So before he was just the application process that the applicant has to go through. Just as a reminder, highlighted in yellow is where we are currently today. If approved, the applicant will have to go through those next three steps. Next. All right, so the planning commission actually voted to suspend their bylaws and move this forward to you without a recommendation. That being said, county planning staff did recommend approval to the board. Next. And so as the county board commissioners, you're tasked with a public hearing. And you can do this as one public hearing, as you may know. Just make the separate motions.
Okay. Any questions for Elliot? Okay, well, we'll open the public hearing then. Would anybody like to speak for or against us? Come on up, just give your name and address, and let us know your thoughts.
My name is Janelle Rosine, and I live at 1475 90th Street Northwest, which is the property directly east of the Bassett. The one under consideration.
Sorry.
Thank you. If you don't have the one at my time, I'd be excited. Kind of what I've gone through with what is online for the general land use plan. And our thoughts. I'm speaking on behalf of people in our area in general. We've had quite a few meetings. And also, I guess, on behalf of our family. So thank you for your time. I already had it answered by Elliot, that you have all received copies or should be receiving copies of any letters that have been submitted. For consideration, I guess I'm going to speak to the intersection in general at first of 75th Street, 18th Avenue, Highway 63. That first page you have there is just something I cut and pasted from the general land use plan. And some of the things I highlighted were, I guess, areas that I find might be incongruent with continuing developing along the 18th Avenue corridor before a roundabout or some new infrastructure is put in at that intersection. So rather than read it, I'll just let you, you know, see what I've highlighted for lack. On the third page, the following was taken from the Homestead County Zoning Ordinance from March of this year, page 68. When deciding on conditional use of A1, A2, A3 agricultural districts, which would include not only the Bassett property under consideration, but it's, oh, sorry, it's page three, page three. One of the factors is the need for new public roads or the need for improvement to existing public roads is minimal if, as a factor to be considered when adding new developments in this area. Well, any area in the county, but of course, I'm speaking to this one. Again, I'm not going to read it all through. You'll have time to look at it later. If you go to the fourth page, how does the location of a suburban division affect the function and safety of the road network? And something I pulled out. That is the picture of the recent study done. And as you can see, and I circled it with an orange there, that deep orangish-red is the area we're speaking of where all these developments are going in. If you look over to the right, it has the highest crash risk rating that it can have. If you look at the actual intersection, it says overcritical rate at this area. And as far as the, in the packet that we were given previous for the Homestead County Planning and Zoning, where it listed, you know, two crashes, three crashes per year. I do work for the Sanning County Dispatch, and I can tell you, and this is what I told them at the time, every day, many times a day, when there are non-injury accidents, small fender benders, we tell people, there's no requirement for us to send an officer or deputy. You exchange names and information, turn it into your insurance company. That's what you pay them for. They work it out. We're a no-fault state. So those numbers are not indicative of small accidents. Of course, anything that has a death and probably significant injury is reported through state accident reports. But to say that there are minimal accidents at this intersection is very short-sighted and not accurate of the study that was done. We have many neighbors who have had fender benders, for lack of a better word there. Some with, you know, maybe a concussion or a small cut to the forehead from airbags. But nonetheless, there is more than what is in that crash report that was submitted. And in fact, if you look down, this is the one that happened last Friday that I actually took the call for. Three vehicles involved. The state wrote it. I don't know. I know that we sent ambulances. I know there were injuries, and I know no one died. I don't know any other information. But this was last Friday at that intersection at sometime in the afternoon. I don't recall. With regard to us wanting something to be done at this intersection for years now, Mr. Wright at the last meeting said, you know, be careful what you wish for on Highway 14. They put in the yellow or whatever, so you can't make turns on that terrible intersection. I understand that that could happen with us pushing for some type of infrastructure change there. But really, all that's going to do is move it to 30th Avenue to the west or 11th Avenue to the east. I mean, we have to get out onto 75th Street somehow. So if it's made so people can't do all the current turns at that intersection, they're still going to need to turn somewhere on 75th. So we're just moving the problem to another area. The transportation study done in July said this is the 10th highest crash rating of the 50 intersections down in our county. And quote, "More importantly, this intersection was found to have a crash rate that exceeded the critical crash rate for the intersection and due to site-specific factors," which would be there are no turn lanes, north and south. There's exceedingly more traffic there and no roundabout. The next page, we are aware that Cedar Ridge, I believe it is, across from Sargent's, spoke at the meeting with regard to the Bolter property. And again, said, "We understand development is going to happen. We're not trying to stop development. We're trying to recognize that the county continues to put developments along this corridor and keeps telling us that there's going to be a roundabout, and yet, no roundabout has happened." Years ago, they told us 2023. I mean, I have been personally calling about this for a long time, both the state and the county. With regard to the infill development, it's my understanding that with infill, it's supposed to be environmentally and socially sustainable, reducing conversion of agriculture land. And are these developments sustainable with current inadequate infrastructure? I mean, that was just when I read a little bit about what the goal of infill is. And I mean, besides the runoff to waterways and stuff doesn't apply to this, but it does have to do with looking at the infrastructure and can it healthily support the current development around it? It has just come to our attention recently that the 75th Street Park and Ride has been approved for Highway 52 off of Prairie Vista. This is one mile from the intersection in question. With my reading, it looks like this is supposed to start this next 2023, which would again add more traffic for people coming from the east to the west for the park and ride to park, if that's the goal of the utilization. Will there be a tremendous number? I don't know. But what we're doing is adding little pieces here and there. And why is this relevant on the next page? Current mining operations. About a mile and a half east of this intersection is Milestone Quarry. At a minimum. A lot, I don't even know. Many, 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 many trucks go through this intersection a day, going back and forth. With the growth in our city and that being one of the big quarries, they take Highway 52. They're not going to take 63 down to the area around Fleet Farm. They're going to go all the way out to Highway 52 and go south. The increase in gravel trucks in the last few years has been tremendous. It is going to be directly related to the growth of our city. And I don't, I'm not saying they can't be there. I don't want them there. It's just the reality of what we've seen through that intersection in the last five to 10 years. I would say the last five years is what we all have really seen the growth. So again, that just adds more. The pink in the lower right is that quarry. And then there is the one up on 100th Street. And I'll be honest, I don't see a lot of trucks going south on 18th Avenue from there. My guess is they go west out to 100. So I'm not going to speak to that as being an issue. In 2002, the county turned down a proposal for a development on the west side of 18th, almost across from this, the Bassett property, but just a little to the southwest. It was 130 acres and a request for approximately 30 homes. In 2002, part of the turn-down amongst the fact that it was next to the landfill, the county said, "We are concerned that 30 homes would add more traffic to 18th than what it can handle in 2002." At that time, both Cedar Ridge and River Ridge, which were on that map, were already in full swing. So I mean, they were already known traffic. Adding 30 homes to those large developments, the county said, might be too much. With regard to the one map on the next page, that is optional routes given to us to avoid that intersection would be to go down 11th Avenue. 11th Avenue, looking to the east, has a curve there and a hill. It's worse than 75th Street and 18th Avenue. So it's kind of laughable, I mean, or I don't know, that that would be given to us as a, an option. In fact, previous to, for the other meeting, I had reached out to a lot of the people in River Ridge One and asked them if they actually utilize the gravel to go south and go east. And no, they drive across 85th and they go south on 18th. They don't use the most direct route. There are people that do go north on 18th Avenue and west on 85th to avoid that intersection, and it is what a lot of us tell our kids to do for their first few years of driving. Safety on the next page. I don't know that a lot of people in my area even realize that we are fall under the Pine Island Fire Department purview, not the city of Rochester. We have one neighbor who was turned down for home insurance a few years ago because of the distance of Pine Island Fire, and that it's volunteer. And they said, "We wouldn't be able to get there anytime soon to," you know, or we think they wouldn't be able to get there. I'm sorry. And if you're not aware of the corridor for Pine Island Fire, it does go all the way down to 75th Street, all the way up to the county line, goes way west, and it goes way east. It is actually 131 square miles for a volunteer fire department. Again, this isn't going to change everything, but the more homes we add to this area, the higher there is for risk. And yes, Rochester Fire is the backup, and I know that, I do that. But it's still something to consider. Additionally, if there's accident with injuries, like there was last Friday, it's not Orinoco first responders that respond. It's an accident with injuries. So they, it is Pine Island Fire that responds for the accident, because you send a fire department. Just something to take into consideration as we add more and more homes to this corridor. As I said previously, on the timeline page, since 2002, all these homes have been added, many more than 30, and nothing has changed at that intersection. Nothing has changed on 18th Avenue. In each traffic study, for every proposal, it says this only adds 1% to the concern of the traffic. This only adds 3%, 2%. Okay? But all those add up. I mean, it's essentially nickel and diming that intersection with a little more, a little more, a little more. And again, to reiterate, we're not asking for no development along that 18th Avenue. We are saying, please don't approve any more developments, even the ones that are phased right now, until something is done with that intersection. In addition to the neighborhoods and homes, at 11th Avenue and 75th Street, there was a private home that was a few years ago turned into All Craft Exteriors, a business, which has also added more equipment, trucks, workers, whatever, going to Highway 52 for all their siding and roofing needs over the last few years. Just yet another thing that's been added. I guess we were wanting to shed concern again that when Cedar Ridge came before the county and said, "We are concerned for our safety on this hill where the Bolter property is going to be developed, getting out and also the congestion at 75th." And it wasn't, the traffic study was there, and it just feels like it's being ignored. And that's, Cedar Ridge has to contend with this new development to the north of them and 75th Street intersection to the south of them and Sargent's across the road from them, which has also grown in the last few years. With, so I wanted to separate the two things. So there's the concern about the intersection there. And then there is our neighborhood's personal concern about the Bassett proposal. And so I'm going to separate that out and speak to the land use plan being changed with regard to that. And I guess, yes, I already spoke to, you know, any one of these developments has not added significant traffic in and of themselves, but all of them together are much more than the county expressed concern about in 2002. With regard to the Bassett proposal, the first page is the sinkhole probability. That area is full of sinkholes. And the one map they had up there for the floodplain, that property is always super wet down in the bottom. One family to the north cannot be here today, but they have genuine concern and spoke at the last meeting that their property already washes, or the Bassett property already washes with lots of rain and floods down into there. And adding homes with, you know, less permeable areas could possibly make it worse for them. And so that was something to consider. If you look, and that's that little, the smaller picture I have for the sinkhole probability, that is this area right here. You can see 63, Highway 52, all those red dots. And I know Wass's property on the west side has at least three or four. The county has referenced that before. Hogan's have dumped literally two gravel trucks of dirt into, on their little two-and-a-half acre property, into a hole that it just disappeared. So something to consider when we're developing further north. The next page is in reference to, that little pink square is across the road and a few hundred yards from this property in question to be developed. And it is one of the few scientific and natural areas in our county that is managed by the DNR. The property, I know that the county has said that the properties around this are for the most part developed, but they're not. Many of us are, we have 10 acres looking, if you go on this last page here, down to the third paragraph, and I have, "This property is not mostly surrounded by suburban development." Yes, it is around it, but not mostly. As stated in the previous packet, the properties that physically touch this property or are directly across a road to the west or the south are three 10 acres, 100 acres, 137, 41 acres, and two properties in River Ridge of just under three. Of these, if you average it out, the average parcel around here is 39.25. Many of us, if not all of us, have worked really hard to keep our properties natural. I can speak for us. We moved out here in 2002. We have planted on our 10 acres no less than, okay, we've planted like 600 trees and 100 have survived. We called it our tree graveyard for a while. We have put in over an acre of native grasses and flowers to try and reestablish everything that has to do with the environment and what have you. The Frelletis have 140 acres. In the last 25 years, they've planted 10,000 black walnuts, 6,000 green ash, 6,000 red oaks, 8,000 pine trees. Of their 140 acres, they use 12 and a half for their personal home area. They surround a good portion of this land in question. Capels have 25 acres. They use three of that for their home and maybe two for their horse area. They have left it organic as well, like we have. They have a lot of native trees and so on they've planted. Frelletis have also put in food plots. So I guess I'm leaving this with, just because an area has been developed doesn't mean that we have to continue developing. I said to my husband today, "Our daughter got her first credit card." And you know what? It's working. She's learning how to balance money and finances and stuff. The other day, she said, "I should probably just get another one. That one's full." No, that's not how this works. And I would say developments are like that. Maybe you take out a credit card if you have an emergency. Maybe you, you know, look, assess, what have you. Just because there are developments around this parcel does not mean we have to develop it. If you look at the picture that, can you go back to kind of where the acreages were? And the purples? Yes. So all those purples are potential developments. The acreages I've spoke to actually go, I only spoke to the ones around it. But there are many people that own land around this that are working very hard to restore and maybe balance out all of the developments that have gone up in this area. There are multiple reasons why 12 houses is too many on this property. Like Cedar Ridge said when they talked about the intersection, I will say about this. First of all, this land, when it was listed last spring, was listed as can be divided into two parcels. I know that's the realtor, but we didn't, in our area, like, go, "Oh, my gosh." When we saw, we knew it was going for sale. I'm very close to the two. I'm very close to the two older women that have owned this property since the 50s. I knew it was going for sale, but it was, it was listed as can be divided into two. Our neighborhood did not freak out. 12 homes, when it's surrounded by people who are trying to maintain some natural area, and keep in mind, there's a river one mile down at the end of the road, people that have built halfway down the road had to put in big culverts due to the runoff to the river. So do we want to keep contributing to that same concern? Not, notwithstanding, also, it's a floodplain that, the, where he wants to put in the driveway, and it, the floodplain goes up into these other properties and could affect them as well, their floodplains. I understand that this may simply feel like not in my backyard. We have that acronym at work sometimes where people don't like other people in the neighborhood or whatever. Yeah, this is that, not in my backyard. And we are not saying there should never be any development here. What we're saying is 12 houses are too many to continue to add for what is in the area. It doesn't match what is on that side. I mean, yes, White Birch is up there and River Ridge is right on the south, but it is mostly surrounded by large areas of land where people have lived for 10 to 30 years and don't have any intention of developing. Why do we have to put 12 homes in there? Just because we've done it doesn't mean we have to do it again. I think that's it.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak? Just give us your name and your address, please.
Hello, my name's Colleen Ling. I'm at 9051 Eighteenth Avenue Northwest. I just want to say that I'm in support of pretty much everything that Janelle just shared with you guys. We live directly across from this future site. And again, we know development's going to happen, but anecdotally, we've seen the tractor sink into that farm almost every year. We see there's like a marsh there with all the red winged blackbirds, the peeper frogs and things like that. And so seeing the potential development that's going to be there to, I want to say demolish, but demolish the ecosystem that is growing there. And then we're also trying to like, kind of bring back more native landscaping and stuff. Half our trees have died that we planted as well, but we're certainly going to keep trying to kind of bring and stabilize everything that's changed over the last decades. So yeah, so really support of putting a roundabout on that intersection. I've been in too many close calls and I have a very young boy that I would, don't want to see anything happen to amongst, including my neighbors' kids and stuff like that. So in support of that, and I was in support of slowing down the development in that section. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Come on up.
Good afternoon. My name is Heather Hogan. I'm at 8778 Ridge Cross Drive Northwest and have lived at that, at that address for a little over 20 years. And I just want to echo what the other two speakers have said about the increase in traffic in that area and not necessarily being against development. When the two new schools went in and those sites were announced, I could see that the writing was on the wall that a lot of that property north of there was going to be developed. However, that intersection, the infrastructure there is not set up right now to support that increased traffic. I represent a household of three drivers, and in a short couple of years, will be adding a fourth driver. And I can tell you that I hold my breath at that intersection during those high-traffic times. I have serious worries about my teen driver and advise him to avoid that intersection when at all possible. And myself, I do that as well. That is my biggest concern and would request that we look at slowing down the development or improving the infrastructure to support the increased traffic that we are seeing at that intersection at this time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak?
I have one question.
Sure.
Janelle Rosine, 1475 North West. So with regard to people that have sent in their concern or whatever, whether it's last week or today, do you have the opportunity to read those before you vote today? Or is it?
If they were sent in in the past, they're in our packet.
Yeah, they're in our packet.
Okay, but if they were sent in the last day or two, you don't have them?
They're on our desk right now.
They're on our desk.
Okay. And I forgot my other question. Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks, Janelle. Anybody else speak?
This is Derrick Rosine, 1475 North West, Janelle's husband. So one of the emails she mentions, I think, came out today, it's got 34 people expressing concerns about this intersection from River Ridge. So I don't know if that's in your packet, but it's a pretty good turnout of folks over there that share the same concerns as the rest of the people that spoke.
I believe that's the.
That's on our desk now?
Yeah.
All right, would anybody else like to speak?
Hi. Matt Polis, 8930 Eighteenth Avenue Northwest. So we also have a property right to the south of this development. It's not a whole lot to add because Janelle went through everything in depth for all of us as we've met outside of this to come up with those concerns that she shared. But, I mean, the, there's two big points. I mean, the traffic is huge. They've started using the quarry on 100th Street, which maybe Janelle touched on, but we've lived out there 12 years, and this is the first year they've been regularly hauling trucks up and down Eighteenth Avenue as well. So there's additional use there. There's already been one accident at Eighteenth and 85th with one of their grain trucks, hit a truck and the truck rolled down. I realize it's not the same bad intersection, but this is on that same street, adding to the same concerns everybody has with the traffic. And then with drainage, we also have a pond on our property that drains north with where they want to put the road. I think that would be a little bit of difficulty to have that lift back up to their road and then drain to where their proposed new north pond. They want to put a new holding pond on the north end of that field. It's currently at the south end of that field, which is where our overflow goes. So I think that would need to be addressed as well because we bring a lot of property, our rain from properties to the south and east of us that flow through our property into there. And then to the point of, we all moved out there for the countryside. I mean, I get it, we're not, other people want, we've heard it from your guys at the board, you're going to hold that back from other people that want to live out there. Blah, blah, we've heard it. But we bought 12 years ago, 20 years ago, these people in this, in this room for the environment that it is now, not for it to be developed. I mean, it wasn't like we just bought five years ago and this development was new. River Ridge was 20 years ago. So for 20 years, people have lived and moved out there for the rural setting. So changing that now, it's not like, the response that we've gotten from the other committees is, "Well, don't you think you upset the other people?" "No, there was nobody else there 20 years ago. Those farmers sold, now we're there, there was nobody too upset." So I think keeping it the countryside, we don't, is also a plus, I mean, especially ours. We bought ours for, we have a view of countryside. Realize that could change, it could be a house, it could be two houses, hopefully not 12 houses. But, so I mean, again, it just all goes with what Janelle said. I mean, it's the same thing. The traffic is the same, I mean, that's the largest, that's a huge safety concern for anyone. We have board drivers at our house, two teenagers currently, one more that's going to take his permit, or start taking driver's training this fall. So it's not a safe intersection. We advise them to go around, but, I mean, there was a map that shows the outlined great alternatives to avoid it. I don't know if you guys have driven on those, but the alternatives are not safer than, than the other. If you're going to be going towards 52, there's one alternate, sure, because you're just making a right-hand turn down closer to 52. But that's, it's not really any better. Traffic's still moving faster, it's a wider intersection. The gravel road on Eleventh Avenue is a worse option than using Eighteenth and 75th. So even if you were to say, "Oh, there's going to be a roundabout in 2025, 2026," we've heard it, we know it. There, supposedly it's coming, supposedly a lot of things are going to happen. But if we allow it to build, allow the building to come in before, even when that's closed then to do the construction, what, now we're going to have extra traffic using detour routes, the other unsafe routes? I mean, either way, no matter what you look at, it does not make sense to allow more building until the roundabout is 100% completed, not it's going to start, there was enough traffic going on detours. And those detours are the two alternate routes that also aren't safe. We're not, we're not getting anywhere with safety if, with that aspect. But again, I don't have anything else, I know Janelle went over everything with, pretty much shared all of our concerns in depth, so.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak?
Hi there.
Hi.
My name's Yasmeen Polis. I'm at 8930 Eighteenth Avenue as well. And we live just on the south side, just like my husband had mentioned. The concerns brought forward are affecting all of us. We're all very concerned about the intersection at Eighteenth and 63. Most of us, like my husband and I, have chosen alternate routes such as going east or west on 85th Street and taking that alternate route to avoid that intersection. We've told our kids, my, our daughter, if, you gotta take that other route because Eighteenth and 75th is not safe. I know our neighbors right across the street, they've been taking the alternate route as Eighteenth and 75th Street intersection, a neighbor a few years ago shared her experience. It was December of 2019. And she said, "I almost didn't make it home to my family tonight." This was just before Christmas. It's been a concern, and this isn't something that's brought forward for the first time in front of you guys at this very moment. This has been a concern for years. And bringing in more traffic with denser neighborhoods is just going to add more to the issues that we're experiencing right now and having to deal with. The accidents, I've noticed there has been an increase in crashes at Eighteenth and 75th, at Eighteenth and 85th. So even with people trying to avoid that intersection, there's, I feel like now there's more traffic up further and there's more issues somewhere else instead of taking care of the problem. I know that, I don't know if you guys had a chance to go through the meeting minutes or how much information is actually shared from the meeting that we had previously to this one, but I had brought up an issue with the accidents that are being used for, sorry, for this intersection. And I was really concerned that accidents under $1,000 weren't being included in the study because we were in a car accident a couple of years ago and neither car had a crack on the bumper and I ended up with severe pain and a concussion. And I also brought this forward to the other group that we met with, but concussions are And I wouldn't want any of my neighbors, any of their children to have to deal with something like that because of the lack of input from people that are concerned and people that are supposed to protect this community. There was another incident at that very same intersection. There was a birthday party at our house, all the kids were dropped off. It was time to pick them up. One of the moms got into a car accident there. We were lucky, she was able to get away with minor issues from that, but it, it could have been a really awful outcome for everyone at that birthday party if this mother wouldn't have made it through this accident. And I realize that accidents happen and we're people, but we're also people that need to protect this community and look out for each other and make sure that our neighbors, our kids, our family members, our parents don't end up at a car accident here because now we allowed more traffic in the area to make this intersection even worse. Okay, so I think I made my point with the intersection. But another concern that's been brought forward is the flooding and the floodplains and how they work. It's unreal how they really work. I just wanted to kind of give you an idea of what happens in our yard every spring. But if you can picture turning on a hose and setting it on your driveway and walking through that, well, multiply that by about 20 or 30 hoses. That's how much water flows from around our shed down into this pond and then to the north of our property into the site that's being considered to develop. Yeah, I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak? Second time, are you going to speak? Second time, would anybody else like to speak? Okay?
Hi, my name is Emily Lund, and I live at 8991 Miller Place Northwest. I own the property directly, it's the same street that, where the, where the street would go, so catty corner to the property. And I am the newest member of this neighborhood. Me and my family were transplant here. We actually moved up here from Tennessee, and we moved directly to this area specifically because we love the country and we wanted to, you know, have a, have some room and some girth in our lives. We're also loving our neighbors. And I guess, two things. One, I am a new person at this place. We bought our house in fall, winter time of last year. So I haven't had as many experiences as everyone else at that intersection, but I will say, I do agree with everybody. I have seen tremendous things. And in a very, very surreal moment after our last meeting, I was traveling with my two kids in the car, and there's a gravel, gravel truck in front of me, behind me, you know, a biker coming with their car going around it, and then Three Goose wandering across the road. And I will just say, it's just, it's almost like a Final Fantasy, like Final Fantasy version of that intersection. Haven't been there for too long, but it is, I mean, I definitely support everything that they're saying and everything that has been touched on. The only thing else I really kind of feel like I might want to touch on or say is just that when we bought our house, we were very, you know, like, location, location, location. We were, we were very nervous about having roads around our house, but it was a large property. And we honestly, we actually called the county, we, we talked to many of the homeowners along the dirt road and talked to them about their plans. There's a huge push, as they've kind of noted already, that that will not be developed, at least the homeowners that own that area, they have no plans to develop that. They do want to keep it natural. And more than anything, I do feel slightly misled. I know that, probably not intentional, and I don't know if they had the authority, but we, we talked to the county, you know, and I guess, we were told when we moved in that property was for sale. And, you know, we didn't worry because again, it's, you know, you think, okay, it'll be developed, but two houses, again, no, that's, that doesn't make you blink an eye. But, you know, when you're talking about 12 houses in this very small little neighborhood or a little small area when everybody else's property is so much bigger, it does kind of, kind of like a little bit of an eyesore. So just, yeah, I just, it feels a little misleading and, because this is our forever house and, you know, I have to at least be here to try and put in my two cents worth of just saying to, we really support to put something on here, but not this. You know, just something that's a little bit more sustainable for the area and matches in with the area a little bit more. So, thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak? Before we ask this?
Matt Polis, 8930 Eighteenth Avenue Northwest. Has the developer shared any of his previous developments that he's done? Do we know what?
I don't know that we're to that point yet.
I have shared, I got her name.
Not, not with us, so.
That's true. Actually, I was thinking.
Mr. Chair, actually, I was thinking it might be helpful for Elliot to review where we are in the process. Um, because we're not at the point that there's any definitive plans and we're not approving a definitive plan. So could we have a review? Maybe go back a couple of slides and review where we are in the process?
Claire, could you go back to that one slide with the steps on it, one through?
Confusing. There's many steps to this. And it, and honestly, sitting here on the board, if I have for several years, we don't do this very often and I have to refresh my own memory because it is, there's many steps to this, so.
There. All right. Um, so yes, I do. Just so everybody knows, I was taking notes to clarify a lot of the points, um, for the audience and the board members up here. Um, so this application process right now, what we're looking at is the general development plan and land use. Um, Plan Amendment, emphasis on general, so this is not what the preliminary plat or final plat will look like potentially.
Excuse me, but that is really great planning language. Could we put it in ordinary citizen resident language?
I would describe the general development plan as a concept, a sketch idea, um, a napkin drawing. Um, and the land use plan amendment is before you and that is what you are deciding to change. Um, right now it's potential suburban development, which again is lands that could be suitable for suburban development, single lot, large, um, lot development. Um, and in the close model, which again is not the end-all be-all, um, but it does help us make, um, accurate and educated, um, decisions for land use. Um, has painted the site as being, um, suitable for that.
So I'm gonna stop you, okay? So what we, with our land use plan amendment, we have defined different categories of land for use, including agricultural protection, urban service area. And this one was classified as resource protection, potential suburban development. So all of the properties that are around it right now are in that classification. That potential suburban development, just like these people wanted big suburban lots, others will want them. So that's potential suburban development. So now we're at the plant, place where we are going to reclassify, amend the plan for this particular property. So we could, it could now move into the suburban development category, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then we have just sort of this general idea that it could be, could be up to twelve lots. And it could have this kind of a, uh, it has to accommodate the water flow, the, and it could have a retention pond and it could look like this, but there's nothing firm.
Correct.
And that's, so all we are asked to do today is to say, yes, this can become part of a suburban development and this general idea of up to twelve lots is okay with us, but then Orno, then we move to step three, right?
Yep. So you would basically be saying yea, nay, and then the township would then take over, um, those next steps. They would approve the same GDP, general development plan sketch idea that you have also approved and then they go forward. And if they say, yes, this is solid, um, then they go for the zone change and then a preliminary plat. So that would be the sketching out the lots.
And that takes time as well. And there are more public hearings with the Orinoco Township about what the specific plan would be.
Right.
And then, uh, and I mean, I don't know, maybe you can give us an estimate of how long that usually takes. And then the township has the final, proves this, is the final plan approval. And only then can the developer begin to do anything on that land.
Correct.
So, and then we know that from other developments, it takes years to actually develop the, the, the housing into saleable properties.
Correct.
So we're looking at multiple years here.
Mm-hmm. Yep. If I speculate, I would say two years.
Two years.
Project. Um, and that being said, um, MinDOT has funded this project for seventy-fifth Street and eighteenth Avenue. Um, it's just between the county public works and MinDOT on what that timetable looks like. So just equality.
So there may be some congruence between how long it'll take to actually develop this and at what point we will be able to have that roundabout ready as I'm seeing Ben Johnson's head come up. And, and was there not some conversation about the potential of getting some advanced funding to do that roundabout sooner? I don't know where that is right now yet.
Yeah.
Clarify that point. It's in MinDOT's plan for twenty-twenty-six. Negotiating with our public works department, okay, correct me if I'm wrong, to move that into twenty-twenty-five for us to manage the product. That's where it stands. So it is in the plan to improve that intersection.
And funded.
And it's coming. It will happen.
And funded. I mean,
And funded.
This is different for people staying home or listening out there is, you know, I've been an advocate at the highway fourteen and one oh four, now County Road forty-four and that's gone on for
Twenty years.
Twenty plus years. But that's, has not, the state does not have the funding for that. That's why that's going on and on. This roundabout is funded. The money is there. It's gonna get built in twenty twenty-five or twenty twenty-six and they want to build, they wanna, MinDOT wants us to help them move it up to twenty twenty-five. The money's there. It's gonna get done. So whether it's twenty twenty-five or twenty twenty-six, it's not like fourteen and one oh four at all. I mean, it's different, which is, I mean, uh,
It's good news.
Yeah. Good news for you guys, bad news for highway fourteen.
There's points, a pretty good chance there may be one house that is then built by then. Maybe two.
It takes a while.
It's not gonna be all twelve or twenty-four.
I, I mean, I feel like we've heard two things. One is, we're really, really concerned about traffic and why in the hell, excuse me, why hasn't that happened sooner? Um, and that's gonna be happening, but not eat to, you know, you wish it were done now. And I don't blame you. I travel that road sometimes myself. Um, and I caution my husband every time we go through that intersection, be patient. Okay, so then, those of you, some of you really would soon keep your, no more development up there. Some of you are saying you are opposed to development. Development, we're a growing community. We're a growing county. We're gonna need housing sites. Development is gonna happen up there. Um, so, but that'll take years. It's not gonna be, like, next year, the houses aren't gonna be in.
Um, yeah, I would have to agree with you. And I will say that the applicant is in the audience. If you have any specific questions for them, um, regarding their plans. Um, and then any questions you have for that intersection at seventy-fifth and eighteenth, um, as well as Charlie's memo, we have staff on, uh, online and in the audience to answer those questions specifically.
Is the, is the potential developer present that they could answer questions?
Correct, yeah.
Mr. Chair, would you entertain a couple of questions to the, to the developer?
The developer's welcome. We're still in public hearing, so he's welcome. She's welcome to speak. Would the developer like to speak about his or her project?
Hi, Michael Classic, two zero seven one Wild Wings Pass, Alcoa New Market, Minnesota. Fly your way with your questions. I'm happy to answer them.
So you've heard a lot of concern by the, by the adjoining neighbors about, about runoff?
Yes.
About accommodation of, of, of water flow?
Yes, ma'am.
And, um, can you respond to those concerns?
All of the engineer staff that I have working with me on this project, all the drainage goes right to our retention ponds. Nothing flows outside of our development, anywhere out of any of our developments. We have three currently going.
And even, uh, I, I believe I heard someone say that there would be, they would anticipate you'd get flowage from adjoining properties, you can accommodate.
If there is a flowage problem from a neighboring property into our site, a simple call or it will fix that problem.
And there was also questions about what kind of experience you have.
Uh, nineteen ninety-nine is the first time that I developed. I completely did it by myself. Rented the bulldozers, did everything.
And currently?
Currently I have three properties, two hundred and eighty-five acres, close to fifty-six acre sites. Some industri, some industrial too.
Suburban development, you're familiar, you, you do a lot of suburban development?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And we have a hundred and eighteen acre industrial currently that we're working with FEMA on.
Thank you.
And as far as the traffic concerns go, I can relate to that. I've actually had seven concussions. I spent a week in a coma in nineteen ninety-nine from a motorcycle wreck. I'm not trying to endanger anybody here. MinDOT did their studies. One percent for me, one percent for everybody else. I can't fix that.
When you anticipate, if you get all the approvals, what would your, uh, optimistic timeline given our supply issues today and
I,
in the housing market?
I feel we'd be fortunate to have one house built in two years.
Okay.
I feel we'd be fortunate. I liked it done yesterday.
Can, can we get back to the process of what we're doing and having a public hearing? I don't, I mean, asking questions of the developer, we can,
Or vetting.
Yeah, we're not vetting this guy. Let's, the public wants to get, we don't want to be here till eight o'clock tonight.
You want me out, sir?
But I mean, we're kind of going this way and this way and we're not following our process.
I think we're fine. Um, just well done with this. Yeah, are there any more questions for the developer?
I just have one question.
Oh, we can't go in that, we can't go that direction.
Well, just look at the timeline. It said that he says spring.
Yeah, we can't go that direction.
No, no, no.
We can't go that direction. We can't go this way. It's this way.
Take it offline.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak for or against this? Second time, would anybody else like to speak for or against this? Certain final time, would anybody like, else like to speak for or against this?
Move to close the public hearing.
We'll see the second to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
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 I've got some comments. Okay, here's, here's the way this works. We've had, I've been on this county board for twenty years. We used to have a lot of these GDPs. Then the economy went in the tank. We haven't had them. But I've got some experience. Some of these things you're probably not gonna like what I've got to say. However, uh, number one, the traffic concerns, I think I've explained it to you. I understand, believe me, on highway fourteen, we've had deaths in County Road forty-four. And I've been trying to get, uh, bridges there, uh, 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 interchange there for twenty years. This, your intersection is bad. I live out there. I live off of, uh, Sixtieth Avenue and up by Seventy-Fifth Street by Douglas. I travel that. It is, it's crappy, but it is getting addressed and it is funded and it's gonna be built. You can take that. I mean, I'm sure, I see a lot of you shaking your heads, yeah, 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 yeah. The money's there. I mean, it's getting built either in twenty twenty-five or twenty twenty-six. That's a fact. Uh, you know, and it, it's done. The design is done. It's gonna happen. Some of you have said you don't want, you know, you moved out for the rural lifestyle and, you know, that kind of things. All the townships, when I was on town board, the, most of the townships, so what is it, nineteen of them got together and they do their own planning, okay? So the way this is, works is you need to take those concerns to the Orinoco Township Board. Generally, we approve the general development plan unless there's some big problem. Every township has their specific, uh, rules that they want to follow. They can be more strict. They can't be less strict than us. So the way this works is if we approve it today, uh, then Orinoco Township has to approve all this stuff. And if you only want six lots there, or if you only want two lots there, or, you know, whatever you want, they, that's why the townships do their own planning so they can specifically identify things for their own townships. So I would recommend that. Number three that's up there, right, those are the three key ones you gotta go to is the township GDP, general development plan, the zoning district amendment, and the preliminary plat, because we've let the townships do their own planning to be specific. Some want to be more rural, some want to be more suburban. So we've let, I think it's, it's not all the townships. I think it's nineteen.
Seventeen.
Seventeen, okay, uh, all the ones we have in Olmsted County. So I think we've addressed your concerns. Uh, again, I know you're probably not happy. You just would like us to table or, you know, not allow this thing until that roundabout's done. I don't think, in my opinion, that's not fair to the developer. It's not his problem that everybody's using the roads. You need to contact your state legislatures and tell them you want to get more money for funding roads. And, uh, you can, you know, shake your head, but I've gone around on this thing. It's not fair to tie, we're a growing community. I mean, if you don't like us, that we're a growing community, you know, I can't do anything about that. That's the facts. We've grown, I don't know, forty thousand since I've been doing this job. These people gotta live someplace. They gotta drive someplace. Uh, that's just the way it is. And so, I mean, this is a good plan. I got no problem with it. So I'm gonna move approval.
Let me clarify just one more thing before we vote on this is we're looking at a change in the land use plan required for land that is suitable for subdividing into two, three acre plots. Just like lots of you guys have. Just remember that back then, when you guys moved out there, somebody else went through a land use update to designate that as suburban land, that allowed you to purchase it and build a home and get your piece of the rural environment. That's what's happening now. That will continue to happen. Based upon the map you saw, that where that land is amenable to suburban development based upon our land use plan that we won't violate. So we're just starting here, as Jim said. All we're doing is approving it for potential to be suburban development and a general development plan. And now many more steps have to take place that the developer has to jump through to get final approval. And I will second Jim's motion.
Okay, we have a motion to second before we vote. We have a chance for discussion. Are there any thoughts? Okay, I'll just share that. I, I drive that road every single day. I understand how dangerous that intersection is and I've been pushing for a roundabout for years. State took over Seventy-Fifth Street, made it into a highway that's kind of slowed us down because it took, gotta have two people to play. Now the state has come through with their, their funding, that intersection will be fixed. It's gonna be a big roundabout. There are gonna be complaints about that. I'll get a lot of phone calls about the roundabout next. Um, but it will be a lot safer than it is right now because it's terrible. There's no doubt. Um, I, so I think that answers the big concern because I share that concern. That answers that big concern. The rest, I mean, it's, it's hard. You gotta separate a motion from, from the laws. And the laws state that this property is developable based on our standards, based on our, our plan. And so it'd be very difficult for us to turn down something that we've already said this meets our standards for development. So, so that's, that's where I sit. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, carries.
Now we gotta do the other one. We gotta do the,
So that, that was where the land use,
Don't move. Second.
Wait, please, sorry. I just want to, for the public record, go through our, um, findings of fact for the general development plan given the, um, traffic concerns. Um, so similar to the land use plan amendment, um, we reviewed this against, um, certain criteria. So on the screen right now, you'll find those findings of fact, which we're all positive, um, for this property, um, given this general development plan. So we look at proposed land uses. Um, so it's gonna be going to suburban development, which you had just voted on. Um, so it is in accordance with that. Um, street pattern is appropriate, service properties under consideration. There's only one road for twelve properties. That's sufficient. Claire, if you could scroll down.
I swear, you said based on findings of,
Yes. Yeah, so these are all
Right.
Looking at drainage. They have a drainage pond included. Um, a lot of the detail though will be in the preplat at the Orinoco Township level. Um, so just looking at the layout that they proposed. Um, so.
Thank you.
In case you wanted to see those and for the public's reference.
Okay, so we passed it based on that. So now we got, we already have another motion to second for the general development plan discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, carries. Thank you guys for coming. This is a good discussion. All right, let's move to our consent agenda. By fifth, Board Benitz. Pay twenty twenty-two, two property tax fire abatement seven four dash three two dash one four dash one, or zero zero four three three one.
Move approval.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, next up, discussion decision items. Homestead County Midyear Priority Update from Health Housing and Human Services.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, James Johnson, the HHH Division Administrator. Travis Karanzy couldn't be here, the Deputy County Administrator, so he asked me to briefly introduce our team here. Over the next couple of board meetings today, this, this afternoon and then on the second of August, we'll be briefing back to the board the HHH efforts and initiatives related to your board priorities. On August second, we'll be talking about public health and pathways to prosperity. This afternoon, we'll be hearing from Director Dave Dunn with the HRA. But before that, I'll introduce Director Nikki Niles with Corrections and talk about Corrections efforts. Thank you.
Sure. Welcome. You're welcome, Nikki.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Commissioner Tying, County Chair. Um, this afternoon, I just want to talk briefly about the, again, as James mentioned, the board priorities that have been identified as it relates to assuring safe communities. as it relates to assuring safe communities, um, and our next steps. If you can go to the next slide, Clara. So we pride ourselves in Corrections by using evidence-based practices and data to drive our work. Data shows us, per our census, that there are significant disparities and disproportionalities in our criminal justice system in all demographic areas, age, race, gender. Um, and so what you see here are our census data from twenty twenty and then our corrections staff data in all of Dodge, Fillmore, and Olmsted County. So with that, using that data, we are going to be intentional, as we always have been, and responsive to our clients' needs. We have specialized caseloads throughout Corrections as it relates to domestic violence, sex offenses, female unit, our juveniles. And so we are going to be doing the inception of our Inclusion Diversity Equity Action Team, better known as our IDEA Team. And again, this is a proactive way to reinvest in our justice system that is fiscally and socially responsible as it relates to disparity and disproportionality in our work. Um, agents that specialize in this work just attended a cognitive-based intervention training. Again, a lot of the work that we do in Corrections is rooted in cognitive-based interventions, our thinking. If we can control our thinking, we can control our behavior and our outcomes. This training, um, is culturally specific, excuse me, and it identifies populations that, again, are disparagingly impacted by our criminal justice system. You can go to the next slide, Clara. Um, it's targeted, it's behavioral focused, um, and we're at this point where we are, again, starting to have these discussions with our local criminal justice partners on how to attempt to close these gaps as it relates to those demographics in our system. Next slide. Our progress to date, again, in enhancing supports for our children of our incarcerated parents. So some things that we've done this year. We had two agents attend a virtual conference hosted by Arizona State University as it relates specifically to children of incarcerated parents. Currently, our agents are intentional about connecting our clients to existing resources in our community. We also just got approval this afternoon to apply for the Title II Justice Grant to promote wellness and support youth within our Minnesota juvenile justice system. So a proactive approach to supporting youth as it relates to those that have been identified as at risk. And beginning August one, the state has also taken some initiatives by the Healthy Start Act. This act is specific to women that are incarcerated and are pregnant or one year postpartum. Um, whereas prior to, they would just be at Shakopee. Their baby would go with family and there wouldn't have any connection to them. Um, starting in August one, case planning has begun to where these women can be housed in the community and keep that bond and that relationship, um, that mother to child that we know is so important and plays into secondary trauma. Next slide. And just the next steps. Um, Corrections and Public Health is hoping to partner with our ADC staff. We've had some great meetings. Staff at the ADC has completed the Parenting Inside Out Curriculum. I believe Sheriff Torgerson talked about this at his showcase a couple of months ago. Um, so we're hoping to get on board and partner with that. As we know, detainees in our ADC have received this curriculum. Um, and sometimes before that curriculum ends, they might be released. And so probation, along with public health, is hoping to learn that curriculum so we can keep that curriculum going. Um, again, just using the resources within our community to have those continued conversations about how we can better serve the families that support, um, children whose parents are impacted by incarceration. Specifically, potentially partnering with the children of incarcerated caregivers, looking at the Oregon model for sentencing alternatives. Again, targeted interventions for that population of, um, of that community that we serve. So at this time, if you have any questions, I'd gladly take them.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nikki.
Thank you.
Mr. Dunn.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Uh, Dave Dunn, Housing Director. Here to talk about, uh, our, our goal of creating, uh, more and preserving affordable housing. And so we talk about our progress this year and really kind of what we've been able to accomplish. I think several of these are things that you've already been aware of, but uh, first and foremost, we were able to complete our acquisition of the one oh five Broadway building with, uh, AMESHA funds from the American Rescue Plan Act and then also from the HRA levy. So that's been completed and done and is now we're moving forward with that. Uh, last week, we submitted our application for funding for Phase Two of the Mailwood Project, so we're very excited about that. Now we wait until December to find out if we're funded. Hopefully, maybe there's some additional funding that comes through. I don't know. I know this is, uh, that's one of the things that we're worried about, is that there's just not a lot of funding available right now, but we did get that submitted. And then the other thing we've done, and we haven't talked as much about it, uh, as an HRA board or as much as a county board, but it's our, really our partnership with the Coalition for Rochester Area Housing. Uh, this is a group that is part of your ARPA funding. You designated ten million dollars to kind of go into affordable housing projects. And so one of the things, and you're gonna hear more about this than just today, but kind of where is that investment going? What is that group been working on? And I know that's something that's gonna be coming back to you here, hopefully in the next couple of meetings. But there's four projects up there right now that that group has invested in so far in twenty twenty-two. Now, a couple of these are, uh, tax credit or funding applications for projects this year, but the Pentagon House is actually on the Crossroads College Campus, uh, Bear Creek Development Corp. It is, it, it makes me laugh. One, they do amazing work, but it makes me laugh because the Pentagon House has six units. It just makes me laugh. Wait for it.
It's gotta sink in.
It's, it's gotta sink in. And, and the reason they call it the Pentagon House is because it's, it's a partnership that they're having with several, uh, veteran service organizations. And so those homes will be serving veterans who had previously been experiencing homelessness. And so that's one of the partnerships that through our work with the Coalition for Rochester Area Housing, we've been able to do. Of course, we've talked about Mailwood Two, uh, Valley Fly, Valley High Flats Project Two is an application that came before the Coalition. Uh, that is a tax credit project that came from, uh, the Joe Weiss Development Company. And then the First Homes has been really active. And this picture on the side here is the Ninth Avenue Row Homes that they broke ground on back in May. Uh, and so there's been several of these projects, and I think that's one of the areas in which you'll get a more comprehensive update probably from Joe Marie in the upcoming meetings. Next slide, please. Uh, next steps, I think there's a few things. I mean, I could sit here all day and do coming attractions, and you want to all know how much I love a good PowerPoint. But I will keep it brief. I think we do have some opportunities with the GAIN program. I mean, so far to date, we have had one application approved, one additional one that was submitted and not approved, so we've had two applications. We really need to look at tweaking that program a little bit. I think the first tweak that we've talked about kind of is increasing that income limit from eighty percent of the area median income to a hundred percent of the area median income. And we think that would help make it a more plausible for a family that with that level of income to be able to afford the home that we're talking about. So that's one kind of item that's out there. Uh, the next one is our Shelter Work Group. Uh, this is a, a group, uh, professionals in the community who are working around the issue of unsheltered homelessness and really starting to try to plan for what are our future shelter needs in the community. Originally, we were talking about how would we be best, uh, equipped to go after some of the state funding that we thought was coming from the legislature. But what we've done is we've shifted our focus a little bit and to talk about how, one, how can we get our system to continue to work more effectively? And what are those tools that we need to enhance that system? So we can all work to make homelessness rare brief in one time and to bring all of the partners working together in the community. Because although we've made a ton of progress on this issue, the needs are continuing to increase. And there's always more work we can do as far as how do we work better with partners? Because one of the things that we see, just for example, next week, uh, all of the partners who do rental assistance are gonna meet together for the first time. What we've done historically is we say, oh, if I call, you call me. Well, if I can't help you, I tell you, call you. And then you say, well, call somebody else. And it becomes a scheme of telephone because number one, we don't know what resources are available. And number two, because a lot of times we don't want to have to share bad news either, right? We don't want to have to say, well, we don't know that we have anything for you. So it's a lot easier to say, hey, I can't help you but call somebody else. So these are the types of things that are coming out of that. You'll be seeing a more detailed, uh, update on this in August and an opportunity to provide formal feedback on the progress of that group. The next one on there is really evaluating the Creek Facility. So that is a temporary, that is a temporary ninety-day supportive housing facility that was started during COVID. The funding for that runs out in the middle of twenty twenty-three. We need to make some determinations what our long-term plan is for that facility, so that's kind of continuing. And then the last point on there is developing a community housing preservation strategy. And this is something that's being done right now at the Coalition level. Uh, and as partners with the Coalition, we're working with them, but, you know, we need to create affordable housing. But we also really need to remember that we need to preserve it as well. And although it's not as exciting, you don't really have the great groundbreaking when you just bought something. In a lot of ways, it can be just as if not more effective. So those are kind of our next steps as we move forward. And if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Great. I know you were all disappointed that you didn't get to see me earlier, so I want to make sure that I can come here now.
Really appreciate that. Thank you, Dave.
Ooh, into my day.
All right. That's it for that. Now we're moving on to the twenty twenty-two resident surveys, survey results for Homestead County. Hey, Deborah.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Uh, Deborah Airbiller with Policy Analysis and Communications. Uh, we are here to present today the results of the twenty twenty-two resident survey. The survey we've been, um, offering since two thousand eight in the community, and the last one was in twenty nineteen. You may remember the name NRC National Research Center. That's the group we've worked with since the beginning. They have now, uh, become part of a larger company, Polco. So you, the report that was in your packet, uh, I think references Polco and Fermín will talk about them. Same organization, it's just now has a different name. But one thing that is different this year is that we did not at the expense of having Polco come and do this presentation, which they have done in the past. Instead, we skipped that step. Um, and Fermín Espinoza, who is a lead management analyst with PAC, is gonna present the results and, and talk about our process. And I just really want to commend him. He started with us in twenty twenty-one and launched into this project pretty much right at the beginning and has taken it from beginning all the way to, to this end. Well, it's not really the end because then we have next steps with the, with the results. But at least the accumulation of the, the survey process, and he's just done a fantastic job.
Good.
So, Fermín.
Thank you, there. Chairman Chair, Commissioners, members. So yes, my name's Fermín Espinoza with, uh, with the Policy Analysis Communications Department. And I'll just be going over the summary of the results for this twenty twenty-two resident survey. So here's a link on the slides, just in case for the public wanting to have access to the, where we're posting the, the full report in case they want to see further, further information, because we'll make it going on the highlights. So the agenda for today, we're gonna be going over a brief background of, uh, the resident survey, which Deborah already kind of added a little bit of context there. Um, then other results that we collected earlier this year, how that data was then, um, analyzed and presented in the report, and how we'll be presenting it here in this presentation. We'll mainly focusing on those highlights that are coming from the, the executive summary of the Polco report that was written up earlier this summer. But I'll be adding a little bit of more context to that data. And then some closing thoughts on those highlights, as well as next steps. So what is the resident survey? So again, like Deborah had mentioned earlier, it's a survey that we've done since two thousand eight. About every three years, we have a bit of a gap, um, between two thousand eight, two thousand thirteen, but then every three years since then. So this is our fifth iteration. Again, the purpose is to gain resident perspectives on overall quality of life living in Olmsted County. Uh, but also to rate various customer service and performance ratings for government services that we provide. Uh, it's a five, five-page survey. Um, this, this particular iteration had about nineteen questions related to that quality of life and, uh, service ratings. And eleven, eleven questions around demographics, housing situation, uh, length of residency. So it's also that, uh, it's a five-county collaborative. We work with, we've been working with Dakota, Washington, Scott, and St. Louis in these past iterations, as well as the one currently. Again, contracted with Polco to do the implementation. Uh, the collaborative, we started meeting in September, uh, last year, meeting with our boards to update the, our board and leadership, um, and divisions to update the survey. And then we implemented it around, uh, end of January, throughout February. Uh, about four thousand four hundred surveys were sent out to randomly selected households throughout the county. Households in all seven, um, districts were, uh, sent the survey. We sent about a hundred more surveys to districts one and two just because historically they've had lower participation rates, slightly lower. So we wanted to make sure we had even representation from each district. So what was done differently from this iteration from, uh, surveys past? So besides, uh, two thousand eight, where we did the survey all by phone, we've since done the surveys, uh, by a hundred percent paper mail. So, uh, residents would receive the five-page paper ma- mail in their, in their, at their home along with a postage paid return envelope. That would typically go back to NRC or, or Polco in this case, so they could do the data entry. This time around, Polco had recommended they do a, we do a hybrid approach. So of those four thousand four hundred surveys, uh, sixty-five percent of them were paper mail and thirty-five percent were online only. You have your postcard with an online link, so they can take online, and then they, Polco would receive that data right away. Previous iterations, we did the only one type of survey, which is that randomized scientific survey. This time around, we did a randomized scientific survey and a non-random open participation survey. And I'll explain the difference between those two in the next slide. And another difference is that we only had one language available in previous iterations, so English. This time around, we had, uh, Spanish and Somali available. Uh, and then years prior, we only had one diversity equity inclusion type question. Whereas this time, we wanted to, us and the other counties, we all, we wanted to add, uh, some more, so we added four more D E I related questions. And then another difference was that we wanted to try to, um, consolidate and make the, the survey a little bit more smoother to take for the respondents that could reduce their time taking the survey itself. So we had twenty-four primary questions in two thousand nineteen. We reduced those to nineteen. Uh, this time around, we also got rid of some of the open-ended questions that do tend to take a lot of time when they, when the survey takes it, um, takes them. So again, we were, we're trying to improve on how we can make the survey while still retaining, uh, much of the important information that we've collected over the years. So again, that difference between the, uh, scientific, so two types of surveys that we did this time around. So, uh, the scientific survey, which is that randomized survey, that's the one we've done with each iteration. That's the title survey that, that's, uh, it's backed by best practice in, in terms of research because then you can use the results from that survey to, to generally apply it to the wider community. It's weighted based on various demographic and characteristics of the, of the, of the resident respondents, but it also, because it has that random nature, it helps avoid potential bias selection, right? So that, that's from, coming from the data collector. So that, that way, when they do, uh, statistical analysis on the data, they can, they can with higher confidence or higher probability be able to say with, with fewer errors that, that this results would kind of reflect the wider community. The open participation survey, on the other hand, non-random, it doesn't have those benefits that, that are in the scientific survey for, um, uh, wider applicability. But it was an additional resource that Polco had offered to us that was free, so we wanted to use this, uh, opportunity as a, to see or to give our residents another opportunity that had they not been selected randomly to participate, we could still hear their opinions on these various questions. Uh, so we made that widely available to the entire, to the community, working with our communications team. We, we also, uh, made sure, we also wanted to to see if we could push it to, uh, some of our community partners who work with various, uh, communities in our county. Um, especially communities who we may not have heard from in past iterations. Um, in this case, uh, non-white residents, we wanted to kind of hear more from them since we always had lower samples in prior iterations. So we wanted to make that available for everyone. So working next slide, yeah. So for this, so the response rate from the four thousand four hundred surveys that were sent out, we had about twenty percent come back in mail and online. That's around eight hundred or so responses. As you can see from March, two thousand nineteen response rate of twenty-eight percent, it was a bit of a drop. But the estimated drop, um, response rates for the other counties that we were working with, they all had a bit of a drop this time around. And Polco had, um, given us this, uh, they had, we had anticipated this because Polco had said that, um, these type of, uh, community surveys that happen over, over long periods of time, in this case, we've been doing it since two thousand eight, they do tend to drop over time. Uh, but a response rate generally between twelve, thirty-five percent is still an acceptable rate, so we work well within that range. So in terms of how the, actually, the data was, uh, analyzed, I'm using, uh, one of our questions from our survey, question number two, as a, just an example here. So this, this pretty good question asks the resident to rate various characteristics of Olmsted County as a whole. And there's fifteen different characteristics, and I'm only showing the top three here, just to give an example. So then for each of these characteristics, Olmsted County is a place to live, as a place to raise a family, or as a place to work. We then ask the resident to rate, based on a four-point scale, excellent, good, fair, or poor. And then there's a fifth option, I don't know, in case they don't have a particular, um, opinion on something, or in the case of government service, maybe they don't have. Or in the case of government service, maybe they don't have a particular experience with one. Um, so, but what we're really, uh, interested in is that four-point scale, right, for each of these areas. And so then, um, Polco then converts all, all responses of that four-point scale into a hundred-point scale, one through a hundred. Um, they use, they give an example, they go step by step on that process in the report, but they use this example of the United Weight Thermometer, which is down the screen. Uh, where, for example, on the left, you have that, uh, thermometer, you have the four points, the, the four, fair, the four, fair, good, and excellent. Each is given a numeric value between one and a hundred. And then on the right, you have the percentages. So in this mock example, this is how many respondents rated each of those four points. So then being able to use the percentages along with the, um, each of the four points given a numeric value, they're able to calculate, uh, an, an average rating, in this case seventy-four, which is the blue. So that average score rating to one or a hundred, that's how, uh, most of the data is presented, um, when you're comparing. This is one of the benefits of this, that you then compare across years, you can compare to other counties who may ask similar, similar questions. But maybe they use a five-point scale or something, as you're converting it to a hundred, you can then compare across. So that's one of the reasons why it's done. Another thing that's, uh, used is, uh, very, the resident characteristics compared to for each of the questions that are done. Uh, and we'll go, we'll go over some of these differences for some of the questions in our presentation. Uh, so again, uh, comparisons done across all these different characteristics. This is all for only Olmsted, uh, county residents, except for the county where we're comparing us to the four other counties that we work with. But all the other ones are for only Olmsted County, we're working at those. Another benefit to using Polco or NRC in the past is that they do this kind of work, um, with other counties and cities throughout the, throughout the country. Uh, so they have a proprietary database where they collect responses, uh, from, from all of their community surveys that they, uh, help facilitate. And wherever there's a community of, of five or more that asks a similar question, they create benchmarks, national benchmarks that we then, we can then compare to for some of our questions. Which gives, just gives us more insight in terms of how we're doing, since we can compare on a national scale, uh, with other communities, instead of just comparing with ourselves, uh, year to year. So going into certain highlights, just, uh, something to take note that I'm only gonna be going over the, the highlights and in the report, it only, the executive sum only covers the highlights of the randomized survey. So it's four thousand four hundred, the eight hundred or so responses, this is the results from this. So the first highlight is that, uh, Olmsted County residents continue to enjoy a high quality of life. So this is coming from surveys, uh, questions one through three. And just under that, you can see question number one, how would you rate your overall quality of life in Olmsted County? So that is, uh, again, between the excellent, good, fair, and poor four-point scale, converted into a hundred-point scale. You get the average, uh, ratings for each of those years. For some of the other things I'm showing, but, uh, there on the chart on the right, you see our average score rating for twenty twenty-two is seventy-three. And it's been basically remaining steady the same, so the thirty is not showing, but it's actually seventy-three again. So again, it's remained quite steady throughout past iterations. And this actually has a, uh, national benchmark average compared to about forty, which means that asked this question, uh, we rate, uh, higher than the national benchmark average, our seventy-three average rating. This is an important question, still saying that overall quality of life in Olmsted County, because it links to our twenty twenty-two county-bound scorecard, under the goal of assured, safe, and healthy communities. Uh, our baseline there on the bottom, middle, and red for two thousand nineteen was our average score rating of seventy-three. And our target there on the right was, we hope to bring up to seventy-five, but as, as you can see, our actual rating for twenty twenty-two was seventy-three. So, uh, short of the target, but, uh, same as the baseline. Again, kind of staying to this overall quality of life question in Olmsted County, uh, when compares, in comparison, comparing across different characteristics of residents. Um, so here in the chart, our, our overall average is seventy-three, that's going to be the red line that goes across the entire chart. Um, and so, uh, the, the, the report, they do break out to these comparisons for all questions. But then they also apply statistical, uh, formulas on the data where, uh, they differentiate, uh, comparisons where some have a statistical significance, some don't. And I'm only gonna be sharing the ones in the presentation that have a statistical significant difference. And what I mean by statistical significance is that when they do the statistical analysis and they apply the formulas, they return a result where there's a high likelihood or high confidence level. That the differences that exist, such as, for example, in this, in this case, male and female, the difference that may exist there for a particular question is an actual difference that would exist had all, in this case, had all male or females in the, in the county responded, it would likely get the same result. Where versus just it being a difference by chance. So, uh, so again, our, for the question, overall quality of life in Olmsted County, average rating seventy-three. Male, those who identify as male tend to rate this a little bit lower than the overall average. Those who identify as female tend to rate this a bit higher. Looking at age difference, they're in black, uh, ages eighteen to thirty-four tend to rate this a bit lower than the overall average. Those thirty-five to fifty-four rate this about the same, or rate this the same as the overall average. Those fifty-five plus rate this a little bit higher than the overall average. Uh, housing detached or attached, so like a, you know, single-family home would be like an attached, attached, maybe even like an apartment-type home. Uh, so those with detached housing tend to rate this overall quality of life a little bit higher than the overall average. Those with detached, with attached, a little bit lower. Looking at household income differences, they're in black, those with a household income of under fifty K, tend to rate this quite a bit lower, about ten points under the average than the overall average. Uh, those fifty to just under a hundred K rate this a bit above, and then a hundred K plus tend to rate this the highest amongst the income groups. Looking at differences between whether they own or rent a home, those who own a home tend to rate this a bit higher than the overall average. Those who rent a home tend to rate this a bit low, quite a bit lower, almost ten point below the average than, than the overall average. Looking at residency, those who've been here, or length of residency, those who've been here five years or less, rate this about the same as the overall average. Those six to twenty years, a little bit above, and those twenty-plus years tend to rate this a little bit over than the overall average for quality of life. Again, differences between, uh, districts, the districts five, six, and, uh, five, six, and seven, tend to rate this a little bit higher than the overall average. Districts two and four, a little bit, uh, lower, and districts two and three, rate, rate this the lowest for overall average for, um, quality of life in Olmsted County. And then comparing ourselves to the other four counties that we've worked with, there on the left in red is our overall average from Olmsted County at seventy-three. So we're a little bit under that of Dakota County and Washington County for this question, or a bit higher than Scott and St. Louis. Question number two asks residents to rate fifteen different characteristics about Olmsted County as a whole. I'm gonna go through all fifteen, but I will just highlight some, some of these characteristics. So our top three characteristics from this question are, Olmsted County is a place to raise a family, as a place to work, and as a place to live. And there you can see their average score ratings for those three in red. Uh, these, all three of these have benchmark averages to compare to. Uh, our, uh, Olmsted County is a place to raise a family, rates higher than the national benchmark average. As a place to work, we rate much higher than the, than the benchmark average. As a place to live, we rate similar to the benchmark average. Our bottom three characteristics, uh, are availability of public transportation options, availability of affordable childcare, and availability of, of, of affordable housing. Uh, the bottom two have national benchmark averages to compare to. Uh, that of affordable housing, uh, twenty-six, rates lower than the national benchmark average, and affordable childcare of twenty-seven, rates, uh, much lower. So it'd be, um, so yeah, lower, much lower, it's like six to ten points or ten points, ten points, points more than the national average. Uh, the Polco calls these out specifically in the report. Uh, one, because of how low they compare to the national benchmark averages, but also they've consistently been the lowest characteristics rated in past iterations as well. So they just wanted to make us aware that that was the case for these two areas when it came to this question. Some new characteristics that we added for this question. Uh, the top two were, uh, so for economic health in Olmsted County and overall image and reputation, those top two were questions that other, other counties had been asking prior iterations. Uh, they also have national benchmark averages to compare to. And, uh, since the last time we did this, uh, survey was in two thousand nineteen, so pre-pandemic times, we wanted to just see what, uh, residents had their, had their, what were their thoughts or perspectives on for economic health and overall image and reputation of our county. So there's the average score rating of those two. Economic health, uh, that our average score rating of sixty-six compared to national benchmark averages, we actually rate much higher than, than the, than the, um, average national benchmark averages. Overall image and reputation of, uh, sixty-five rate, uh, was higher than the national benchmark average. Uh, the bottom, the bottom two were also new characteristics that were diversity, equity, inclusion, uh, focused. Uh, so a place where all residents treat each other with respect, and a place where residents of different opinions have an opportunity to voice their concerns. And so there's the average score rating of thirty-three, fifty. On that fifth, on that four-point scale, it's in a bit between fair and good. Uh, there's no ba- national benchmark average to compare to on these two, but, um, this, this was something that Washington County had vetted with their leadership to add on their end, and we wanted to, uh, all, all the counties that we worked with wanted to add some kind of D I related questions, and we wanted to compare to Washington's. And our average ratings, uh, came up a little bit lower than theirs. Uh, question three asks overall what, what residents like about living in the county. Um, there's about ten different options, but I'm just gonna show you the bulk of where the responses link to. So thirty-eight percent shows quality of life in general. This is ten, this tends to be the highest one that gets the bulk of responses in past iterations as well. Uh, fifty percent said location, eleven percent rural small-town feel, ten percent, uh, said their neighborhood. So the second highlight is that, is that of government performance indicators, which have, uh, remain stable, but definitely some room for growth in the report. So this is, uh, coming from survey questions eight through twelve. So eight focuses on ten overall government performance areas, nine focuses on twenty-seven specific, uh, county services that we provide. And then questions ten through twelve focuses on that customer service, anytime a resident may have had contact with the county, um, in the last twelve months, since taking the survey. Uh, so first starting with question number eight, is that those ten areas, overall government areas that are rated, one of those ten is asking residents to rate how we are doing at fulfilling our vision of being a dynamic world-class county, delivering excellence every day. Our average score rating was forty-five, or between fair and good. This is linked to our twenty twenty-two county-bound scorecard, under the goal of assured, safe, and healthy communities. Again, there's a baseline at the bottom, middle, and red. Two thousand nineteen, our average score rating was forty-nine. We helped bring that up to the target of fifty-three, as you can see at the top, at forty-five, we actually had a drop since our two thousand nineteen results. Again, sticking with question number eight on those ten overall areas, our top four areas rated were the value of county services, the quality of life in their neighborhood, the job the county does at providing information to residents, generally acting in the best interest of the community, and effectively planning for the future of the county. And as you can see, their average score ratings for each of those. Our lowest rated were the job the county does at listening to residents, the value of services for taxes paid, resident knowledge of the work of Olmsted County Government, and the job the county does at managing tax dollars. You can see their average score rating for those. And basically out of the ten, seven out of ten all had slight drop, slightly drops in their, uh, ratings from two thousand nineteen. Where we have.
And this one that we compared with our, our comparison counties, not the benchmarks, but the Minnesota counties.
Um, yeah, so those, those questions do have comparisons across the, the four counties, um, for some of them.
I can just find him in the report.
Yeah, yeah, they're, they're, they're in the report. I think the only, like, one of the, like, for some of our vision would be ours only, but, but, for some of them, there are some comparisons. Uh, where we have a national benchmark average compared to of these ten areas, so where we rated similar to national benchmark averages, uh, was the value of services for taxes paid, generally acting in the best interest of the community. Where we rated lower than benchmark averages was, uh, the job the county does at providing information to residents, the job the county does at managing tax dollars, and the, and the job that we do at listening to residents. Those are the score ratings for those. Going to the question nine, which asks, uh, them to rate this twenty-seven specific county services that we provide. There is a twenty-eighth option that asks overall quality of county services. Uh, again, that four-point rating, good, excellent, fair, or poor. Then for a ten-point scale, there in the chart below, you can see that we've asked this question since two thousand eight. And so there's the average score rating for each of those years, twenty, twenty twenty-two being at fifty-eight. So steady, slight drop from two thousand nineteen, but, um, still quite stable. Uh, this, uh, this most, most recent rating of fifty-eight, also, we also have a comparison to national benchmark averages. And, uh, we rate similar to the national benchmark average. And that particular question on overall qua- overall quality county services is linked to our twenty twenty-two balance scorecard, again, under the goal of assured, safe, and healthy communities. There in, uh, bottom, middle, baseline for two thousand nineteen, it was sixty-one. Our target, we hope to bring it up to sixty-five, but we, uh, actual rating for twenty-two was fifty-eight. So it's a slight drop from the baseline. And sticking with this particular question on overall quali- quality of county services, uh, looking at the differences between, uh, various resident characteristics. Uh, so again, our overall average is fifty-eight, so that's the red line across the chart. And looking at resident, uh, length of residency, those who've been here five or less years tend to rate this a bit higher than the overall average. Those between six to twenty years, a little bit higher as well. Those twenty-plus years tend to rate this overall quality of life, or overall quality of county services a bit lower than the overall average. Uh, household income differences, those with fifty K or, or less, rate this a little bit lower than the overall average. Those fifty to just under a hundred K are the same as the overall average. And those a hundred K, a hundred K or more, rate this overall quality of county services a little higher than the overall average. When looking at that difference between districts, all the county services, uh, districts two, five, six, tend to rate this a little bit higher than the overall average. Districts seven rates the same, uh, and districts one, three, and four rate this a little lower than the overall average.
You go behind six.
And we get comparisons between us and the other four counties. Uh, again, our overall average there is in red at fifty-eight. Um, ours came in a little lower than Dakota, Scott, and Washington Counties and their residents, how they answered this question. And then we came up, uh, a little higher than that of St. Louis for overall quality of county services. There, for this particular question, again, they do comparisons of all questions, uh, by all the resident characteristics. But we didn't have any statistical significant differences for this question for age, gender, uh, housing detached, attached, or whether they rented or owned. So I'm not gonna, uh, show this here, but you can definitely find those in the report. Um, and then specific, specific county services that we pride with, where there's a national benchmark average to compare to. Where we rated higher was maintenance and repair of county roads, our average score rating of eighty-two was higher, much, much higher, so I guess I'm, kind of, that points. Uh, where we rated higher than benchmarks was, uh, snow and ice removal of county roads, recycling and drop-off services into the recycling center plus, manuse, planning, and zoning, including permitting, and disaster preparedness plans. Where we rated similar to national benchmark averages was, uh, county parks and recreation, sheriff office services, services to older adults, public health services, and protecting children. And then questions ten through twelve, we get into that customer service focused area. Um, so the first question of ten asks, have you been in contact with the county either by email, phone call, or visits to the office? Yes or no? So this is the chart that shows that yes percentage, so tend to get about half of respondents saying they've been in contact recently in the last twelve months. In this case, for twenty twenty-two, just under half at forty-one percent. Of that forty-one percent, we then ask them to rate various aspects of their visit. So did the, did the staff, uh, listen to what they had to say, were staff willing to help? Did the services they, uh, were looking for meet their needs? The overall ease of finding and getting to the office, staff making you feel valued, the overall ease in getting to contact, in contact with the office. So that's the average score ratings for each of those areas, which puts them all between, most of them between, uh, good and excellent, except for the bottom. Their, uh, overall ease in getting in contact with the office puts it just under, um, good, a four-point scale. And all these, uh, these ratings have, uh, maintained steady since two thousand nineteen and higher since we added them in two thousand sixteen. Uh, we also asked their overall impression of the county staff member that they were in contact with. So were they knowledgeable, courteous, responsive, overall impression? Uh, and the act, and so there's the average score, uh, our, the average ratings to one or a hundred for each of those, all putting them all within good and excellent on the four-point scale. They all, these also had, uh, national benchmarks to compare to, since other communities asked this customer service-related type question. Uh, knowledgeable, courteous, and responsive all rates similar to the national benchmark average, and overall impression at the bottom there is sixty-nine, actually what came in higher than the national benchmark average. So just in the interest of time, just to go over some of the other highlights that were brought up a little more quickly here, related to issues on safety, uh, concerns, adversity, and inclusion issues. So question four and five, uh, residents feel safe overall in Olmsted County, and this comes with questions four and five. So, uh, in question four, uh, residents rate how unsafe or very safe do they feel, um, in various as- aspects of, of living in the county? Um, or areas and, and under, um, so where they feel the most safe, in government buildings, in their neighborhoods, in, um, messy environments. And there's the average score ratings for, uh, those three. So that puts it close between somewhat safe and very safe. Uh, where residents felt the least safe was in county roads, distracted from others, whether that be texting, talking on the phone, reading, et cetera. There's the average score rating of, uh, forty-six. This one does tend to be, uh, the, the area that residents have tended to feel the least safe consistently in past iterations, so that's just something to highlight as well. Where we have, uh, from that question number four, national, um, national benchmarks to compare to. So how, how safe do residents feel from property crime or safe from bodily crime? There's the average score ratings of sixty-five and seventy-one. They actually came lower than the national benchmark average, so it's in six to ten points under the average. Um, question number five asks, uh, ten different areas of, uh, of that residents can rate as, as problems in the county. Crime being one of them, but other, other areas, poverty, homelessness, taxes, um, came up. Crime clean in with an average score rating of fifty-one, uh, writing, uh, those ten, between minor and moderate problem. Seeing to that question about, of problems or issues, uh, where residents rated, uh, the highest consumer problem for the county was lack of housing options and high, high taxes, uh, which have remained, uh, high consumption for residents with an average rating of sixty-seven or sixty, and sixty-six. So, so that puts that between, uh, moderate on that four-point scale. And these, uh, these two have consistently been, uh, uh, consistently some of the top concerns for residents. When it comes to, uh, diversity, equity, inclusion. When it comes to uh diversity, equity and inclusion type questions, um, again, like, like I said earlier, uh, we had only one uh DEI related type question in past iterations, uh this time we added four more. And again, all these additions, uh we, we added to existing type questions to make it again easier to take for the survey. But so for example, the, the top three uh are, I have, you have included these Q two, so this is, these were added as a subset to, to primary question number two, which asked about various characteristics of the county, so again, excellent, good, fair and poor for each of these three. So starting from the top, the county has a place where residents treat each other with respect, has a place that has openness and acceptance of uh people of diverse backgrounds. And as, and as a county, a county has a place where residents of different opinions have an opportunity to voice their concerns. So that's the average score rating for those top three, which puts them all uh thirty three and fifty, puts them between fair and good. Um, the second to the top, openness and acceptance of people of diverse backgrounds, that's the one we've had with each iteration in the past. And that actually has a national benchmark average where we rate similar to the national benchmark averages. Uh, this is the top one, the middle one, these are the new ones that we added, which again, Washington County had added as well. And our average ratings uh came in a little bit lower than theirs. The top, the bottom two were added to question number five, uh that question about what are our problems or concerns with um county. So yeah, when there's crime, the, the top two were um housing actions and ta, taxes. Uh, these two are in addition to that, so discrimination attitudes toward diverse people or lack of opportunities for people of color. And these average ratings are forty six and forty four, so actually lower, those average ratings, the least, the less it's seen as a problem, in this case, they were closer to a minor problem compared to residents' ratings. Uh, Scott, or uh St. Louis County, I believe, was the one who had these as well compared to. And their resident solidism was a problem in their county, and ours did in our county. And uh one thing to add here, we're adding addition, uh additional DEI. Part of it too is that given our, uh, one of those DEI initiatives, we wanted to uh, um, provide more opportunity for, for data, data collection and awareness of how we're doing in the county as we, as we, we set that, that initiative. So that's part of what we added to the DEI type question as well. Uh, another reason too is that it's kind of linked to our twenty twenty two uh county balanced scorecard, uh again, under all the goals. And part of that was that we wanna also just collect, we wanna hear more from other residents in our county, um, who we traditionally tend to not hear from for various reasons. Um, so uh in this case, non, non-white residents, we wanted to hear more from, so our baseline there in two thousand nineteen in red uh was twelve point three percent, that's how many of the residents who participated in the last uh two thousand nineteen survey were non-white residents. We helped to, that's already moved up to twenty percent, which would put us close to on par with the twenty twenty census, which I believe puts us around twenty one percent non-white in the county. Um, so our actual non-white risk rate for twenty twenty two was fifteen percent, so definitely an increase from two thousand nineteen, um, but short of target. And unfortunately, we weren't able to get enough of a diversified sample by specific groups. For example, like African American, black or Asian or Hispanic or American Indian. Where we could compare amongst groups to get a nuanced understanding of maybe differences between groups. Uh, so that, that, you won't find that in the report unfortunately between differences with other groups, so something where we could potentially improve in the future and get a better understanding of our, of our community, of the different communities of this area. So the overall closing thoughts on, on what we went over, so residents' quality of life remain, resident quality of life remained stable, uh, and relatively high. Uh, but most of their measures dipped since two thousand nineteen. Overall residents feel safe and that the county is a good place to live and work, but affordable housing and high taxes have remained top concerns as moderate problems over time. Overall, despite becoming the government services area, government service areas and service, performance areas and services uh and customer service, but still mostly high compared to national benchmark averages. And actually, to add to that note, um, we had about thirty five different occasions where we had a national benchmark average compared to in our survey. Um, and of those thirty five, seventy seven percent of the time, we rated somewhere higher than the national benchmark average, so we'll take that there. Next step, so we'll be working with our communications team along with uh conversations that we have with divisions in the next couple of months. Uh, going over their specific results related to their problem users, and then working on how we then communicate those results back to the public to show our appreciation for the input and time that they provided, um, they've given us, to provide us with their perspectives. Um, so definitely a big dataset, we'll be digging into this data for a lasting time, asking, having conversations, asking new questions, trying to gain more insights. Hopefully try to find a way to kind of maintain and improve our programs and services and collaborate with the community to maintain that high quality of life. And continue to develop a standard of customer service uh questions uh use in interim years for the next survey. And just one quick and last note here about the open participation survey, so this is the non-random uh survey that we also offer, which is a free service and a free resource that we wanted to utilize. That was the, we, that survey gave us around five hundred and sixty seven responses. Uh, the results from that survey, uh, when, when we were getting all the result, all the highlights earlier, all those average ratings that we saw, for most of those, they were a bit lower from this survey, uh, from that sample. Um, representation in that particular survey uh of non-white residents was a little bit higher, at around eighty percent, but unfortunately, most of them were in the catalog of other, which kind of still leaves us in the dark in terms of who, 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 who they were, and how we might know differences between groups. Um, but we will use it as an additional resource, uh, where there are differences between the two surveys. Uh, if it, you know, relevant in conversation and is helpful to our insight, we'll definitely be using it, so. That's it, questions?
Thanks.
Thanks, Fermin.
Thank you.
This is a very uh daunting report to receive, lots and lots of data. I particularly found it interesting to compare um the differences by districts. I thought that was really, rather interesting that we have that, we can kind of look at this, because we, we represent our districts. So knowing um where there's both a stronger support or concern. And of course, there's one or two things in there that I think absolutely reinforce some of my already formed opinions. Always, you'll hear about those later, I'm sure, so, well, big, big, big project.
Heidi?
Oh, Mr. Cherry, I just was gonna mention one thing that uh Devin Fermin didn't, didn't notice, didn't note, but when I was looking at it and, and reading it, I reflected on, you know, there are a lot of things that we, we kind of feel bad, we didn't quite meet our goal. However, we did have a pandemic for two years, and you had to kind of wonder, how did that affect people? People's perception about how government did, on the one hand, they may feel really good about our local um, or what we did locally, but maybe they're unhappy with what happened at the state or the federal, so I think it was, I mean, that's always the case, but I feel like the last two years, there's kind of a sharpened point around that, and I wonder, it'll be interesting to see uh whether those numbers come right, I mean, I certainly hope so, come right back up. But one that popped out for me, and I know for Doug too, was there was a question uh for me, I'm gonna get it not quite exactly right, but it was about, do we, how do citizens or residents feel about how well the county informs them? And we actually went down, when in fact we know we have put so much effort into that and so much work into that, so to me, that one, I thought, people feel like they don't know, but they're not remembering what it was however many years ago, or maybe the standard is changing among um residents for what they expect immediate, you know? Anyway, it was, I, I always think it's useful to get these data, and I know it's a, it's a big project, but it's, we really do use it when I think about, okay, what do we need to focus on, and I hope that it's useful to the board.
I know this isn't the time anymore, that's particularly the one that I, I noted. And I had some of the similar thoughts of our trust in government has gone down, but also our expectation of people being, having a place at the table has gone up. And our expectation that there, that we be in active community engagement has gone up. And so I, 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 that's one that I particularly noted. Um, and you do wonder about the, the general political context, but anything you're reading today says that trust in government is down. Uh, and we know that people are saying they don't feel heard, and they don't feel invited, and they don't feel that they have a place at the table. And they don't think we represent uh the full diversity of our community. So I think that's, that's a place that, as we look at our strategic planning, I hope that we will spend some time on that.
Absolutely, good point.
And then reinforcing daycare, childcare and housing.
Housing.
I know, it's like.
And the perception of crime, which is not the reality necessarily for us, but those are, I mean, I think there's a lot there for us.
Thanks, Ken. All right, we'll move to board and committee reports.
Matt?
I don't have anything, Mark.
Okay, Sheila.
I'm also gonna pass.
What? Again.
Uh, nothing, it, it, just one little comment that like had the benefit for the public, we recently received another point at the state at the end of the fiscal year. Uh, the revenue came in almost three billion dollars higher than the February forecast. So the state is now sitting on ten billion dollars, of which they have not acted upon. So I, it, the public is listening, if anybody really cares, and I hope they do, call these people, write them, go back to session, they didn't match the federal infrastructure money, they didn't do Senate, the transportation bill, didn't do bonding bill, didn't do tax bill. We shouldn't have paid them at all this year. And all of these things have critical projects associated with them, just talked to Kay and Ben, do you want some insight on that? I mean, it's just revolting. I mean, I'm extremely disappointed, angry as well that now, instead of seven billion, that is not committed at all, I'm not saying spend it all. We can't come anywhere near spending it all, just put it into the things that we need to fix. More recent data that just came out, I hope people are enraged as I am, and I hope they write to their delegations statewide and the governor, because they're all at fault, I put them in exactly the same bucket. I'm done.
I don't, I don't disagree. All right, I got a short quote from uh Robert Ingersoll, nineteenth century literary writer, and he stated, nearly all men can stand adversity, but if you want to test a man's character, give him power. I thought it was interesting. All right, is it motion? Is that good, on favor? Aye, thank you.